This commander of the whole meeting for December 5th, 2023 is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Present.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Babe.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
Alderman Bug and Alderman Yamas request permission to participate remotely per Section 2-80 based on a reasonable anticipation of an extended illness. Is there a motion to allow both Alderman Bug and Alderman Yamas to participate remotely? There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second of Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting? Motion made by Alderman Smith, second of Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Muhammad.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, the mayor's report, as we shared last week, we take this opportunity to honor the life and legacy of someone who gave so much to the city of Aurora for more than four decades, Father David Ingbarth, who passed away the day before Thanksgiving. And we're going to ask the mayor to join us for a special proclamation. We're also joined by two of our distinguished members of the Catholic Church here, the parishes, Father Godwin Asuquo of St. Joseph, and of course, we know extremely well, Father Jerry Leake of OLGC. They're going to come down and join the mayor. If you can please come on down and give them a round of applause. Before the mayor begins, also Alderman Yamas, who's with us, will share comments as well as one of his former students at Archbishop Romero.
Now, someone that... As someone that had the pleasure to work with Father David Ingbarth over the years, it's my pleasure to be here to read this proclamation on his behalf. And I'm... But I'm saddened, as I know everybody, that that knew Father David would be to be here having to read this proclamation. You know, as a young lawyer working in the area, in the... Some of our terrible neighborhoods with the gangs and drugs and shootings that used to take place. Father David would be out there as one of the first folks out to make sure that we were protecting our communities. You know, he was out front and center, you know, getting his hands dirty, making sure that he took care of his people and his flocks. So today, I read this proclamation on behalf of Father David Ingbarth Day, August 24th. Whereas Father David Ingbarth was a cherished son, brother, uncle, priest, and an Aurora icon who passed away on November 22nd, 2023, at the age of 75. And whereas Father David was a powerful presence in Aurora for 45 years, beginning in 1979, when he began service as parochial vicar at Holy Angels Parish in Aurora. Whereas in 1993, he became Sacramento moderator at St. Nicholas Parish in Aurora and became its pastor in 1996. In 2000, he also began service as pastor of Sacred Heart Parish in Aurora, serving both parishes until 2003, then continuing at St. Nicholas until his 2005 sabbatical. Whereas in 2006, he became administrator of Our Lady of Good Counsel Parish in Aurora and was made pastor there in 2007, where he served until he retired in 2014. Whereas at his community-wide retirement celebrations, thousands lined up to bid him farewell. Although he lived in Florida for nearly the past decade, Father David regularly returned to his beloved Aurora to serve. And whereas Father David was the co-founder of the Prayer Coalition for Reconciliation, he served as a volunteer chaplain at the Kane County Jail and was like a family member to generations of Aurorans. So now therefore I, Mayor Richard C. Irvin, join our community in the mourning of the passing of Father David and do hereby perpetually preserve his life, legacy, and memory by proclaiming his birthday, August 24th, as Father David Ingbarth Day here in the city of Aurora. Let's give Father David a round of applause. Because we know he's looking down on us right now.
Alderman Yamas, if you're present, you have comments?
Thank you, Clayton. Mayor Irvin just called Father David an icon, and that's really the best way that I would describe him. I just saw Father David, I think it was last month, at a funeral. And, you know, he had been down in Florida for years now, and I had been here since I last saw him. And even though we were at a funeral, you know, at a time of mourning, as soon as I saw that Father David was there, because I did not expect to see him, I just had the biggest smile on my face, and it just really warmed me up. The kind of cliche thing of it just warmed up your heart, it really did to me. Giving him a big hug after that mass and just told him how much I missed him and, you know, how much of a role he had in my life. I just didn't think that would be the last time I'd speak to him. But I just... I wish I had seen him in a different setting. I wanted to share everything about my life with him, everything. You know, he knew me since I was a kid, all the way I was at the... This parochial school there called Archbishop Romero, that is a part of St. Nicholas Church, or that was a part of St. Nicholas Church, and is no longer around. So Father David saw me grow up from preschool all the way through eighth grade, and since that time, I feel like he hasn't seen me, or he hadn't seen me. And I was just so proud. It's like, you know, you run into an old friend, a relative, you just want to catch up and tell them everything that you've done in your life. And I wanted... Firstly, I do this by about my wife and my daughter, doing the most important things in my life that I wanted to share with someone that was just as important to me. But, you know, I don't want to go down this route and start crying, so I want to share a funny story that we had with Father David back when I was at Romero. I believe we were in... We were in the first or second grade, and our class, I think we may have had a competition in our class one, and the prize was to have lunch with Father David in the rectory. And we... I don't remember if we had a pizza party or we just took our bagged lunch, but the point was that we were in a kind of a big conference table, and our class, we only had about 12 or 15 of us, half of our class sat on the floor next to Father David because they wanted to sit next to him, they wanted to be close to Father David. And that's just how much he meant to all of us. And the lesson that he taught us, the injustices that he set up for at a time when gang violence plagued the Near East Side and parts of, really, the entire city, but more so the heart of the East Side there, right around St. Nicholas, we saw it firsthand, Father David did too, and he did not just sit by and watch these gangs take over the neighborhood. He stood up and he fought back, and he motivated the rest of us to do the same thing, to take our neighborhoods back from these gangs. And Father David, the work that you did, we see now today in the safer city that we call home. And you were an inspiration, and it's now, it's time for us to put into action everything that you taught us. Thank you for everything.
Thank you for sharing your story, Alderman. But as Father Godwin Asuquo, if you share brief comments before we turn it over for closing remarks and an invocation about Father Leake. Father Godwin?
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, good evening to all of you. I did not prepare any speech, but it is with a great sentiment of gratitude that I thank all of you for your recognition of my brother, Father David, in any little measure that he shared his love with the city of Aurora. I first met Father David in 2003. I was just recently ordained and sent to Holy Angels here in Aurora. That is where Father David also started as a parochial vicar. I met this tall gentleman, full of laughter, and when you consider my height and his, each time he saw me, he wanted to give me a hug, and I felt overwhelmed. But that is who he was, a man who did not hide his love. It was outward. And because of his love, he followed God in the path of Jesus Christ in the Catholic priesthood. Because of his love, he did not allow that love just to remain within him and God. He made it visible in what he did in the city of Aurora. It's a reminder to all of us that at the end of our lives, we all will be judged on one thing, not on how much we have, doesn't matter where we come from, Catholic, Protestant, Muslim, Islam, that would not matter. We're going to be judged on one thing. How much did we love? Regardless of our backgrounds, we must allow it to translate into love, and that love is about sacrifice of serving our brothers and sisters, especially those who are most vulnerable. Father David did that in the best way he could. How fitting that the mayor and the whole council of Aurora and all of us gather here tonight to bid him farewell, but also to thank him for his services. May he inspire all of us to do one thing, to love.
I would like to just reiterate what Father Godwin said. I've known Father David for a long time, I've been Aurora 53 years myself, so I was a little bit before him. And I thank the mayor, city council, the people of Aurora for taking the time tonight to honor him. Those of you who knew him, he was a great man. I worked with him a lot, and I just thank you for doing this. I'm sure if he was here, he'd probably be very humbled by it, maybe not even show up. No, but he would be here to thank you for what you've done for him. But we thank him for all that he did for the city of Aurora. He touched many people's lives, I know, when I saw that. As we said, that I think it's a more peaceful city today because of him, and more people have peace in their hearts because of how he ministered to them. And so I'd like to thank you then again for that, but also thank you for the opportunity just to say a short prayer for Father David. And we go to the Psalms where it says, "Be still and know I am God." That was Father David's life, a man who spent much time in silent prayer, getting to know his God. He was still, and he came to know God. It was kind of strange that the Sunday after he died, our church celebrated the feast of Christ the King. And we know in David's life, Father David's life, that Christ was the king of his life, and he was a servant of that king. And the king came, as he said, Christ said, "I came not to be served, but to serve." And that, I think, was Father David's motto, was it not? "I'm here to serve the people of the city of Aurora, seeing everybody as a brother and sister in God." And so we thank him for that, and we read then from the Scriptures. "When the Son of Man comes in his glory, and all the angels with him, he will sit upon the governor's chair, and all the nations will be assembled before him. He will separate them one from another, as a shepherd separates the sheep from the goats. He will place the sheep on the right and the goats on the left. Then the king will say to those on the right, 'Come, you who are blessed by my Father, inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the foundation of the world; for I was hungry, and you gave me food; I was thirsty, you gave me drink; a stranger, and you welcomed me; naked, and you clothed me; ill, and you cared for me; in prison, and you visited me.'" "Then the righteous will answer him and say, 'Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you drink? When did we see you, a stranger and welcome you, or naked and clothed you? When did we see you, ill or in prison and visit you?'" "And the king will say to them in reply, 'Amen, I say to you, whatever you did for the least of my brothers, you did for me.'" And I think that really summarized Father David's life, did it not? Doing all those things for the people of the city of Aurora. And so our prayer would be that he would hear those words, "Come now, Father David, inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the foundation of the world; for you fed me, you clothed me, you gave me drink, you visited me." And so, Father David, we thank you for a legacy that you've left us, that we might follow that legacy. And so we also pray for ourselves, Lord, that we will be still and will come to know our God. And coming to know our God, we too then will want to become servants of one another, seeing each other as brothers and sisters and loving one another, so we too then may hear, inherit the kingdom prepared for you from the foundation of the world. Amen.
I'm sure you've talked to all of the parishes. We'll do one more picture. One month from today, January 5th, will be Father David's funeral and burial here at OLGC. OLGC, so we'll definitely publicize it and be there to support you as well. One more round of applause for our leaders of our Catholic Church here in memory of Father David.
All right, let's go on to the next part of... Portion of the agenda. Let's go on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then let's go on to committee reports. Chairman Patty Smith, can you give the BZE committee report, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following four items, I'll start with the Building, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee met on November 29th, 2023, and reviewed the following items. These four items all have to do with the same piece of property, and we'll go on unfinished due to the fact that they still have to have a public hearing, and once I go through them, Ms. Morgan will be giving us a presentation. Item number 230920, An Ordinance Providing for the Execution of an Annexation Agreement With the Owners of Record Providing for B2C Business District, General Retail, and OS1 Conservation, Open Space, and Drainage Zoning With the Conditional Use Planning Development Zoning For the Territory Which May Be Annexed To the City of Aurora Located At the Southwest Corner Of Liberty Street And North Eola Road On Vacant Land In DuPage County, Aurora, Illinois 60502. Item number 23... County, Aurora, Illinois 60502 pursuant to the approved annexation agreement. Item number 230922, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development approving the Liberty and Eola Road Plan Description and amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinance City of Aurora by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of B2 Business District, General Retail, and OS1 Conservation, Open Space, and Drainage Zoning to the property located at the southwest corner of Liberty Street and North Eola Road. And lastly, item number 230923, a resolution approving a preliminary plan and plot for Liberty and Eola subdivision on vacant land located at the southwest corner of Liberty Street and North Eola Road. And that's, we'll leave this to-
All right, we'll have a presentation from our staff here. Just note that all four items under the BZ committee report will be moving to the City Council meeting on December 19th. So not next week, the 12th, but the 19th, to allow for the required public hearing related to these items. Jill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to just do a quick, a brief, a little introduction of the project, since I know we have kind of a full agenda. Jill Morgan, Senior Planner. I have the petitioners here as well, if there are any questions. So this, all four items, the annexation agreement through preliminary plan and plat is for proposing a car wash is what's being proposed in Phase 1. So the annexation agreement and the conditional use plan development outlines underlying B2 General Retail, a zoning, and the OS1 Conservation for the stormwater detention area. The uses in the plan description allows a car wash use on what is known as Lot 2, which is actually at the exact corner of Liberty and Eola. The plan description also outlines some additional requirements. The bulk restrictions for the interior side door setback was changed from 20 feet to 50 feet because it butts residential, so we did additional buffering there. It also outlines that at the time of whatever lot develops first, that an eight-foot fence will be installed on the property line abutting the residential. There will be a three-to-five-foot ondulating berm in the setback, and the landscaping requirements for the perimeter and buffer yard will also be installed with the first, for whatever lot developed first. And so that is all outlined in the plan's description. The preliminary plan shows the approximately 5,000 square foot car wash at the corner. The other two lots is a preliminary plan, so these are really concepts, so they're basically showing you what could be the maximum allowances that could be built on those lots. So the Lot 2, which is the closest to, I'm sorry, the Lot 1, which is the closest to the residential, is showing an approximately 6,400 square foot commercial building. Again, just a concept design with a potential drive-through. And then the Lot 3, which is along Eola Road, is approximately 4,000 square foot building. The accesses will be from, full access has been proposed off Liberty Street, which is the road that is under Aurora's jurisdiction, though we also reserve the right to limit that, to a right-in, right-out at the discretion of the city engineer if traffic becomes an issue. And they are proposing a full access on Eola Road. That is DuPage County jurisdiction, so that still has to be approved by DuPage County. At BZE, Autumn Smith had brought up wanting a right-in turn lane off of Eola. The developers are amenable to that, and that will be shown at the final plan and plat, which if you recall, this is preliminary, so final plan and plat will have to come through BZE to appeal the item at BZE. And we did have, another thing that came up at BZE was the queuing, making sure there was enough queuing lanes. They have three queue lanes for 10 cars each, plus additional little pull-off lanes for cars, and it's, there's an internal drive aisle also, a pretty long internal drive aisle, so we aren't anticipating any backups, even at the high-demand times. Is there any questions for staff or any questions?
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The property management company wrote a letter of opposition to this. Have we heard any opposition from residents that this is going to abut next to?
Yes, we've had a couple. We had four speakers at Planning Commission and two speakers, I believe, at BZE. I think the residents, we talked it through with them a lot. Their biggest concern was traffic, but we feel like we have addressed that, especially adding this right turn lane off of Eola, plus having that engineering's discretion to limit Liberty Street as well. And another concern of the residents was the buffering. Again, I think, believe we've addressed that with all those requirements with whatever first develops. And I know they're, some of their concerns was not even the car wash. The car wash, the developers discussed all the variables, kind of, I think, addressed all the concerns there. It was kind of that Lot 2, the Lot 1, that's abutting theirs, but we tried to do all that buffering screening.
And then it says that their operations, the car wash operations, end at 8:00 p.m., but will there be security lighting at this facility that might create light pollution for the residents?
I cannot, I can let them answer the security lighting. I'm not sure about that. We do know we have a photometric plans, and it is meeting our photometric plan, showing we actually increased the, reduced the limit. Usually we're at a 1 at Lot Line. In the plan description, we went down to a .5, and their photometric plan is showing they're not, they are absolutely meeting that. But I can let them just have, answer the security lighting question.
Okay. And then I guess my other question is also might be for the applicant, but the car washes on Farnsworth notoriously have water runoff right onto Farnsworth Road, and in the wintertime that freezes over, creating an icy patch. This is at a very busy intersection, so I'm wondering what can be done to mitigate any water runoff that could create a dangerous situation there at that intersection?
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order here. This is about an annexation of property. I believe this is an important question, but that would be the next stage of this after it comes back through BZ.
The question then is directed at item 230922, which is an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development, which is also on the table for discussion, not just the annexation.
This is the preliminary part of it, Alderman Lash. They will need to come back through with their final plans. This is, and there's a public hearing, so your questions should all be answered by the time they come back. Obviously, like I said, it's an important question, and if the petitioner is prepared to answer it, but I just want to make sure that we're staying on task.
Our petitioner, will you approach, please? Thank you very much. And I believe there's two questions that we're having. One was light pollution, and second one was how do we prevent water from going into the street and freezing over in the winter?
Hello, Nick Blom with Car Wash Pro Designers. Thank you for having us. I'd like to state, the very first comment is, we're building a replica of the facility that we put up across from the 24-hour Walmart. So when it relates to traffic or concerns of water runoff, that would be a very good site to use as a barometer. It's an exact same facility, exactly the same equipment, exactly the same setup. So we don't have any runoff. We don't have any areas of over spillage traffic-wise. And when it comes to photometrics, we typically do a zero-foot handle rule at the Lot Line, and then we put shrouds, all LED lighting with shroud, so that way if someone were to look at a certain angle, they wouldn't see the physical light lamp itself. It would, you'd see a cast on the ground in a distance.
Okay. And then my last question was, what about making the fence a little bit taller? I don't know what the total height would be and how that compares to the housing, but-
So the fence we're proposing will actually be taller than what's there, and we're also putting in a berm, and we're going to leave as many of the current trees in place as we can. And it's a lot.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to, Ms. Morgan, do you have anything else?
No.
All right, we're going to put this on unfinished. Again, it'll be on the 19th to give an opportunity for a public hearing. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that is the final-
BZ. Mr. Carl Franco, Chairman Franco, can you give the Finance Committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on November 30th, 2023, and reviewed the following items. First one being 23-0337, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with State of Illinois, the execution of Phase 3 Construction Engineering Services Agreement with V3 Companies Limited, in a not-exceed amount of $102,248, and appropriation of $275,000 of MFT funds for the Hankis-Galena Reservicing Project. This is one of nine federally funded projects for the city, 75% federal funding and 25% local. State funding will apply to a section of this project that is under their responsibility.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next one is 23-0783, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the State of Illinois, the execution of a Phase 3 Construction Engineering Services Agreement with HR Green, in a not-exceed amount of $473,545, and the appropriation of $1.6 million of rebuild Illinois bond funds for the Indian Trail, Eglon the Highlands Signal Modernization and Reservicing Project.
Consent.
This is another federally funded project with 80% coming from the federal government, which amounts to $3.8 million for construction and engineering.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next one is 23-0838, a resolution authorizing the appropriation and expenditure of MFT funds for snow removal operations in 2024 in the amount of $1,320,000.
Consent.
And this, this amount is in line with past year's expenditures.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next is 23-0944, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the State of Illinois, the execution of a Phase 3 Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Thomas Engineering Group, in a not-exceed amount of $53,808, and the appropriation of $250,000 of MFT funds for the Church and Sheffer Reservicing Project. This is another federally funded project for 75% of the costs.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next is 23-0945, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the State of Illinois, the execution of Phase 3 Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Chastain and Associates LLC, in a not-exceed amount of $101,179, and the appropriation of $660,000 of MFT funds for the Illinois Avenue Resurfacing Project, another federally funded project for 75% of the costs.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next is 23-0946, a resolution authorizing the city to a grant award of $79,550 for the U.S. Department of Justice COPS Office de-escalation grant program. And this is to fund additional training for a two-year period. It started in October 2023.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next is 23-0958, a resolution to accept award number 15J COPS-23-GG-01883-T-ECP for the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Committee-Oriented Policing Services Technology and Equipment Program for $2,280,000, and this grant will provide additional safety and security. It is a 100% grant with no matching local-
Consent.
No objections, I'm going to consent.
Next is 23-0965, a resolution authorizing the execution of a five-year agreement in support of the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau through the hotel operators' occupation tax. This is a five-year agreement, increasing the cap that the city provides from $175,000 to $225,000 per year. It also means languishing for our participation as a city on the board for 50% of the members up to 10 members, as the growing board numbers can make it difficult to staff with a larger number. So we're going for 50% up to 10 max because of that.
Cool question.
Alderman Lash?
Have we ever seen, I'm in support of seeing the area convention Visitors Bureau funded, but have we ever seen any return on investment, and what do we use these funds for?
Or will you step up for a second? Introduce yourself for the record and just explain the value of the CBBD.
Yes, good evening. I'm Court Carlson. I'm Executive Director of the Aurora Area Convention Visitors Bureau. I want to first, I thank you for your ongoing support of the tourism efforts on a regional basis. Actually, the tourism impact for our region is $268 million in the year 2022, and that also leads into $13 million of local tax receipts for our supporting communities in the Aurora area. We support 3,000 jobs through tourism in our region. Our sports sales alone, our sales impact from sports is $2.5 million. That's a expenditure that are coming into our region and spending in our hotels, our restaurants, our attractions. We hosted 1.5 million visitors in the year 2022, and our website has over half a million web views in the year 2022. And the money that is received from the Aurora Hotel Motel Tax is leveraged with State of Illinois Tourism Grant Funds and then other local funds from our other supporting communities. So year 2025 is creating a budget of over $800,000 on an annual basis for the Aurora Area Convention Bureau.
Alderman, I know you have been Chair, lead on that board for a number of years. You also explained, just so everybody knows the value and what, you know, all the good work that you guys do in the community.
Thank you, Eric. Yes, under Court's leadership, we have, we've often had the question about data and proving our worth, and Court and our marketing people did a great job producing a document that we send out quarterly, and we'll make sure you get one, that shows the value, especially we just look at one location, the Stewart Sports Complex, which actually is in Montgomery, but feeds in, when you have tournaments out there, it feeds in, all of our hotels fill up, all of our restaurants on Orchard Road out there in the Fifth Ward fill up, and they really have proven their worth and over the past few years. And Court and his staff can provide you a wealth of information to justify that.
Yep.
Alderman Lash?
I just want to say thanks. I probably would have some follow-up questions. I'll take it offline, so it's not to use up the thing. I am in support of tourism and bringing people here. I think we're doing a good job on that front, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you very much.
No objection to that, I'm going to consent.
Next item is 23-0669, an ordinance levying taxes for the city of Aurora Illinois for the fiscal year January 1, 2023, December 31st, 2023.
Consent.
Chris Minnick will speak to that.
Thank you very much. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer. If I could ask the control room to bring up there, it should be the 2023 Property Tax Levy Presentation, please. Thank you very much. This evening, what I'd like to do is go through the history of the property tax levy very briefly. We'll talk over some specifics related to the public safety pension levies. Those are kind of the highlight of the 2023 tax levy as it's proposed. And then we'll talk over the specifics of the remainder of the 2023 tax levy moving forward. So enclosed in the packet tonight is a proposed ordinance for the, that would levy taxes for the city of Aurora in the amount of approximately $87,300,000. In terms of property tax review and historically how we've utilized the property tax levy, we essentially levy property taxes for three main purposes, one of them being general city operations, another being pension costs, and the last item being a, for, we levy taxes to handle a portion of the principal and interest payments, the debt service payments for our general obligation bonds. Under pension costs, we do have and participate in three main pension plans, the police pension fund, the fire pension fund, and then the remainder of the general municipal employees fall into the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Pension Fund. And historically, our property tax levy in total over the last several years has totaled somewhere between $81 and $87 million. The next chart actually is a little bit of a historical representation and graphic as to what's happened with the property tax levy during the period of 2016 to 2023. I can't get that to stay up. And you can see, if you go out to the left side of the chart, we start out in 2016 at around $72 million of a total tax levy, but a tax rate that totals about $2.10. As we move forward in time and go to the far right-hand column, the 2023 proposed column actually is a proposed levy of approximately $87 million, as I have discussed, but the rate has dropped from $2.10 down to $1.70, assuming, based on the estimated EAV of the city as we move forward. So another way to think about that, as you look at this graph, is our revenues have actually increased by nearly 20%, and at the same time, our property tax rate has fallen by approximately 19%. So we're- So we're, we're able to take in more revenue at a lower tax rate because of the growth in the EAV over time. And a moment ago, I mentioned the public safety pension levies. We talk about public safety, we mean the fire and the police pension levy. Those history, that, a graphic with that history is in the chart right there, right there from the period of 2011 to 2023. And each year, as part of the audit process, the city has an actuarial study done on the police pension fund and the fire pension fund, and that actuary is charged with determining the amount of dollars that the city needs to put into those funds, those pension funds today, so that there are dollars available to pay benefits in the future. Each year, those amounts have, as those amounts have changed, as that actuarially determined contribution has changed over time, the city has incorporated that into the property tax levy, and that's what you see reflected on this chart. The actuarial study actually takes into account things like the demographics of the fund, the investment returns, the inflation rates over time, things of that nature. And you can see, starting in 2011, we had police and fire pension levies of approximately eight million dollars each, and as we move to the 2023 proposed, we're in the eighteen million dollar range on police and roughly fourteen million dollars in the fire pension The next chart is the, some specifics related to the proposed 2023 property tax levy. The box off to the right is actually a comparison between the 2022 levy, which will be received, or which was received, excuse me, during calendar year 2023, and then the middle column represents the proposed 2023 levy year levy, which will be collected during calendar year 2024. We talked about an eighty-seven point three million dollar levy, kind of in the middle of the, middle column of the box there for 2023. For 2022, the levy is eighty-five point five million, representing roughly a one point nine million dollar total increase, or about two point two-five percent increase, again, specifically related to the police pension levy, which is increasing from seventeen point five to eighteen point four million dollars, and the fire pension levy, which is increasing from approximately twelve million to about thirteen point four million dollars. You can see that the other levies are actually declining slightly by about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to offset some of the impact of that increase. Right below, there's, I guess it's the second to last group of numbers in that box, we do estimate that the, the property tax rate will fall to a dollar and seventy cents, as I had mentioned a moment ago. That marks the ninth straight year that the tax rate is declining and is the lowest rate that we've experienced here in the city since at least 2011. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions.
That you may have.
Alderman Lesh.
Just quickly, so on the one point nine million, that's what we're levying additionally for.
Correct. Yeah. The actual increase in the pension levies is about two point two-five million, but as I mentioned a moment ago, we're reducing a couple of the other levies to offset a little bit of that impact. So the net effect to the levy is one million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand and some change.
And then if we vote yes on the levy, then it will increase people's property taxes, correct?
We do estimate that, based on the increase in the value of the homes, because the rate is declining, that, that an individual's property taxes could increase under this scenario. It's going to depend on what happens to the equalized assessed valuation of their property, their property value.
Correct. Which presumably most are going up because we're going through skyrocketing inflationary rates. Do we know as the tax rate comes down?
Hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. Don't make a statement like that, as though it's true, and then move on. Answer that question first about what does the interest rates has nothing to do with the property tax rate.
Interest rates do not have anything to do with.
Did I say interest rates or equalized assessed value rates?
You said interest rates.
Sorry.
So, so explain the, the need to actually cover this levy for our police and fire pensions and what happens if we don't.
Yes. So essentially, property tax funding is, is kind of a pay now or pay later proposition. The whole intent and the basis of the property tax, excuse me, of the pension funds is that you invest dollars today so that you can, you can invest those funds over time, they earn interest, and then that creates a pool of money to be able to pay the pensioners after they retire and their service to the, to the city is concluded. We actually statutorily have to contribute to the pension funds to be able to make those payments in the future. The State of Illinois actually mandates it, or funds can be withheld from state distributions in order to fund those pension levies. So it, it's a two-fold street. Number one, if we don't contribute a certain minimum amount to the pension levies each year, the state can step in and automatically make those contributions on our pensioners' behalfs. But secondarily, if we can invest money over time, it actually becomes cheaper in the long run to be able to, to be able to pay those pension benefits because you, your, your investments over time have earned a lot more interest and you're, you're starting to compound interest on interest. So it, it has the impact of lowering the total cost to the total, to the taxpayers over time.
Okay. So the question I asked was as inflation is increasing the cost of housing and EAV, we're seeing a higher level of EAV, is that why we're seeing a lower property tax rate? Or is it because we're bringing in more grant money, more food and beverage tax?
Well, it's a little bit of both. I mean, you know, inflation and inflationary items certainly, certainly do have some impact on, on EAV over time. Additionally, so does new property. We've got a lot of good development going on, on the southeast side of town, as well as some other corridors, and that serves to increase the equalized assessed valuation of the city as well. So those two factors actually combine to increase the EAV, but also we've kind of, we've lowered the amount of property taxes in terms of a proportion that we, that we had seen previously. So we are doing more with less through some of the consumptive taxes and some of the items we'll talk about a little bit in the, in the budgetary portion of the, of the presentation a little later on this evening. But, you know, all three of those, it's not really one factor. There's a, there's several factors that are combining to create the situation we've seen.
Okay. And then just a final question on the pensions?
Mm-hmm.
Because I looked at the debt, roughly eight hundred million in debt that we have, and a lot of that is the pensions, pension liability, and I've seen it go down quite a bit, but we are, what percent are we funded to our police and fire? Because I know that, I'm assuming that they don't fall under ERISA laws, they are regulated by the state, is what you're saying?
They, they are regulated by the state, and they do not fall under ERISA laws, and they are approximately fifty to sixty percent funded, and that gets into a little bit of a conundrum as well, because you have to look at, do you take the actuaries' funding percentage, or do you use the accounting one? But they're both roughly in that range, around, around fifty to sixty percent funded.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Minnick?
Not on the tax levy, no.
All right. Is there anything else you want to present? Right, right now.
Well, I'll read the next, I'll read the next one, sure. Okay. So the next one.
All right. Just so, just so we're clear, let me quick, as far as what city council meetings, I know we've been talking about the 12th and the 19th, which particular city council, just so we are all aware.
Yeah. The, the next step in the, in the process would be that the ordinance would appear on the December 12th, next week's agenda for final consideration.
Does that have to be unfinished, or can we put it on consent?
It can go on consent if that's the will of the council committee.
I'd like to leave it on unfinished, Mr. Mayor.
Unfinished. Next one, Mr. Franco.
All right. The next one is two, three, dash, zero, six, six, eight. An ordinance authorizing running for the abatement of general obligation bond tax levies, 2023 tax levy extension.
Thank you. The, the next item is in the, in the packet, is related to the abatement of the general obligation bond property tax levies. Each year, we abate or remove a portion of the property tax levy that relates to the principal and interest payments on the city's general obligation bonds. Whenever the city enters into a general obligation bond, there's typically a covenant in the bond ordinance that directs the county clerk to extend the taxes automatically. That's done as a, kind of a protection for the bondholders and the people who invest in the bonds to ensure that they will get paid, because we are pledging the full faith and credit of the city and its, its full taxation power to the repayment of those bonds. However, over time, the city has been in a position where it's been able to abate or remove that, a portion of the principal and interest payments from the property tax bills of our taxpayers. In this particular case, and for 2023, we have approximately sixteen point three million dollars in principal and interest payments citywide that would be made during calendar year 2024. We are requesting an abatement or removal of twelve point three million dollars from the property tax liability and bills of our residents. That would leave a debt service levy that was included in the tax levy presentation a moment ago of approximately four million dollars. So this is actually a benefit to our residents, and based on the prior practice and the prior direction, staff would recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Consent.
No objections. I'm going to consent.
Okay. So the next thirteen, our SSAs, what I'd like to do now is I'd like to read the first one, have Mr. Minnick describe how this process works, and then once it's described, I would go through each one briefly, you know, each one of these, because it's pretty much going to be a no-brainer how we do it, if everybody's in agreement with that process. We did it, and legally, it's okay. I just want to make sure everybody's good with that.
No objection.
So I'll read the first one, and then you can give your explanation, and then we'll go along.
And just to be clear, for the Kirk's purposes, because I know we're jumping back from, from the 12th to the 19th, as far as the next city council meetings, that some of these items will go on, all the items that you're speaking of will go on the 12th. Is that correct?
All of these special service items. The only exception will be the budget, which will be this evening after we adjourn the committee.
Okay.
So the first one of the thirteen is two, three, dash, zero, six, five, three. An ordinance levying certain special service.
Typically, a box is drawn around a neighborhood or a particular district, and as, as a portion of this and as a function of this, this area actually receives special services or services above and beyond typical city services that are provided to the general taxpayer. And in order to finance these taxes, or, excuse me, these services, a, an additional tax of special service area or SSA tax is levied to be able to finance those special services that the property owners in that particular area are receiving. In our case, we utilize special service areas for two main functions, support of Aurora Downtown Activities, that's SSA 1A, and that's approximately in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. And secondly, we utilize special service areas to be able to pay for privately owned common area improvements and maintenance projects. That represents approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on an annual basis. We do generate approximately four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars annually from the special service areas that are currently in effect. We currently have thirteen of them. There is a listing that is enclosed in the packet, and I just put up on the screen, that, that details all of the special service areas that are in place throughout the city for which we levy taxes. You will note, as you go through the comparison between the 2022 levy and the 2023 levy, we are not asking for any increases in any of the special service area levies. We are having them remain the same between 2022 and 2023. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the general process or any other questions that you may have.
Alderman Lesh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For all, you can just answer generally about all of them, but most of these are set up to fund a certain project in a certain area.
Correct.
Lighting, sidewalks, curbs, et cetera. I, I understand SSA one's a little different, but when that project is paid for, does SSA continue, or do we shut it down like a TIF?
Typically, it goes away. In fact, most of the, most of the ordinances, I'm not going to say a hundred percent of them, but I believe most of them have a specific calendar date as to what their last levy year is. So they will shut down.
Okay. And then once they're shut down, it'll drop off that person's property taxes and their taxes.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, to ask that question, to add to that, that question, which is a reasonable question, the number of years is determined based on how long it's going to take to payoff.
Yes.
Whatever infrastructure project it is.
Correct.
So for example, if it takes 10 years to payoff sidewalks, the thing is 10 years long, and then it stops or expires and then goes away. Is that right?
Absolutely right.
Next question.
Can I follow up?
Yeah, go ahead.
And also, these SSAs were the result of the neighbors gathering together and wanting a public project, capital project, so they were in agreement of the SSA, know it's coming, and they know the longevity of it, and they expect expiration date within keeping with the past ordinance that we did at city council at that point in time.
Yes.
What percentage of the community, if you, I know you don't know Alderman Seville, has to agree by petition before an SSA is entered into?
Yeah. The, the state statute says that the, the area, the district that you're creating, there has to be fifty-one percent objecting of it for it to not to be created.
Thank you.
Correct.
Continue.
If there are any more questions?
Questions?
All right. So what's consent on this one, and then I'll briefly read if anybody has any questions, but I'll kind of fire through them pretty quick unless.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So we got a consent on zero, six, five, three. The next one is two, three, dash, zero, six, five, six, number forty-four.
Consent.
Consent.
Next one is two, three, zero, six, five, seven, number sixty-three.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, five, eight, number sixty-five.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, five, nine, number sixty-six, A.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, six, zero, sixty-six, B.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, six, one, sixty-six, C.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, six, two, sixty-six, D.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, six, three, sixty-seven.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, six, four, number eighty-eight.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, six, five, number ninety.
Consent.
Two, three, zero, six, 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 one hundred and forty-one.
Consent.
And two, three, zero, six, six, seven, number twenty-four.
Consent.
Okay. Then the next item is number two, three, dash, zero, nine, seven, nine. An ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January one, 2024, and then December 31st, 2024, in lieu of passage of an appropriation ordinance. And what I'd like to do is take this time to thank the Finance Department for once again doing a great job of preparing and presenting a balanced budget, which is pretty much a 12-month endeavor. Thanks also to the various departments for their work in preparing their portions of the budget, and the mayor's office for overseeing and initially vetting the various requests. The presentations by everyone were organized and explained in ways that made it easy to convey the details to our constituents. And I also want to thank the Finance Committee for their due diligence, preparing and attending the extra budget meetings. The comments and questions to the process were thoughtful and appropriate and reflected our desire to be fiscally responsible to taxpayers while funding city services. So thank you for all you do with that.
Consent.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. And what I'd like to briefly do is just go through some highlights of the budget. If you think about the process that Alderman Franco outlined, you know, we started out kind of at the thirty-foot level when we started into the Finance Committee meetings, then we dove and had some pretty detailed presentations at a series of nine meetings that we held over the, the last couple of months during October and November. Now we're going to pull back up and, and take a look at the, the budget, kind of review some of the highlights, and just talk about some of the con- some of the highlights, and just talk about some of the concepts and themes that are in there as we go through. So Alderman Franco alluded to the fact that this is a 12-month process, and and it absolutely is. Monitoring and being able to start thinking and anticipating what's going into the next year's budget is a continual process. It's it's ongoing all the time. But for the 2024 budget, we did have a little bit of a more formalized, approximately seven month process that began with a kickoff meeting that was held with relevant budget staff on April 27. And that that meeting included folks from every department, every division, all those folks who are going to spend the next couple of months entering the budget requests, the decision packages, and the capital requests that were entered during the month of May. And from there, the budget was compiled, and we held internal staff meetings with the mayor's office and the impacted departments between July and September. That's kind of the internal process that the staff went through in terms of beginning the the budget process. And from there, we 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 began the budget, the the public process. After the meetings were concluded in September, we synthesized all the data and all of the numbers into the draft budget books that were distributed in October. We held a series of nine budget meetings and discussions at various Finance Committee meetings during the months of October and November. Those actually wrapped up right before Thanksgiving. Then, from there, we brought the budget back to the Finance Committee on November 30 and requested approval of the document and a recommendation to move that to the committee of the whole and eventually to the public hearing in the city council. And the Finance Committee did recommend moving the moving the budget forward. So in terms of some highlights in the 2024 budget, the budget is balanced. We do have approximately $560 million in anticipated expenditures. We do have about $490 million in but in revenues that we anticipate collecting during 2024. And we already have on hand approximately $70 million for revenues and financing sources that were received prior to 2024 that we will use to to help fund the expenditure level of $560 million. Probably the most important item in bold about midway down that slide, we do not have any tax rate increases proposed or incorporated into the budget. We are anticipating, as we discussed a moment ago, that the city property tax levy will decline for the ninth straight year, and we are anticipating significant increases to the tax base or the equalized assessed valuation for the city. Additionally, in terms of the 2024 budget highlights, we are seeing results of many of the economic development efforts that we have entered into over the past several years. We're seeing continued strong consumptive tax performance, consumptive taxes being sales taxes, hotel taxes, food and beverage taxes, things of that nature. And we'll talk a little bit about why that's important here in a second. We are also anticipating balanced operations in our enterprise funds, and we're seeing continued emphasis and prioritization of the key goals of Mayor Irvin's administration, those being public safety, economic development, innovation, and community collaboration. I did spend a lot of time during the property tax portion of discussing the property tax levy, so I'm going to breeze over that slide very briefly, and then we'll start talking a little bit about some of the capital priorities. We are anticipating approximately $119 million in capital expenditures during 2024, including items such as the public works facility, fire station design and construction for the the construction and relocation project, River Edge Park expansion, as well as capital maintenance on various facilities and infrastructure systems moving forward in time. Switching gears a little bit and talking about the general fund, the general fund is actually where the majority of our of our activity, general governmental activity occurs citywide. If you think about the things you think about a government doing, chances are pretty good it's accounted for in the general fund. Our general fund is balanced. We're anticipating approximately $234 million of revenue and expenditure activity that represents about a $10 million increase, or about 4.5% over the 2023 budget. We are planning for expansion of public safety services. We're looking at hiring personnel for Medic 12 as we begin to build and and relocate those fire stations we talked about a minute ago. And additionally, on the police side, there included in the budget is funding for an additional police lieutenant and seven additional patrol officers. We're also continuing funding for special events, as well as community initiatives and support. A moment ago, I talked about why economic development was so important, and this pie chart is a good representation of that. If you start off in with that big blue chunk in the top right-hand corner, that signifies that approximately 36% of the revenue in the general fund comes from property taxes. In the general fund, we actually see about 85% of our total general fund revenues, so 85% of that $234 million, coming from seven main sources: property taxes, state sales taxes, home rule sales taxes, food and beverage taxes, utility and utility, or utility taxes, income taxes, and our share of the personal property replacement tax that the state shares with us. And this kind of underscores why economic development is so important. When you think about the sales tax, the home rule sales tax, food and beverage, and utility taxes, that represents about 35%, or roughly 1/3 of our general fund revenue, coming directly from those consumptive taxes. The other 15% of the revenues in the general fund come from various and miscellaneous sources, and there's such as interest, income, fines, and forfeits, charges for services, things of that nature. So the economic development efforts that we've seen take place are key. The businesses generate sales and consumptive taxes. The additional population from residential economic development provides per capita taxes from state revenue sources, and growth in the equalized assessed valuation allows for additional property tax revenues, as well as rate relief for our residents. And then, the next chart that's in the packet shows where the where the money goes in the general fund. If you look at the brown piece of piece of pie toward the lower right-hand corner and follow it all the way around to the light blue, what that reflects is about 78% of our general fund expenses are for police services, fire services, public works, or public facilities. And that's a pretty typical ratio that I've seen and experienced for full-service municipalities. And the additional police and fire personnel that we discussed a few moments ago that are to be hired during 2024 are indeed reflected in those numbers. The next, this just shows a little bit of a graphic detail of the of the process we've gone through to get to where we are with regard to the to the 2024 budget, as well as the next steps. We had our departmental presentations at the Finance Committee level from October 17 through November 16. The Finance Committee did recommend approval of the budget and moving it forward to the Committee of the Whole on November 30. Tonight, we are going to, we're presenting at the Committee of the Whole, and then we'll have the public hearing and the City Council meeting to consider the budget as as part of tonight's festivities, and then we will bring forward the tax levy for final consideration on December 12. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we take, before we take questions, I just want to give credit to you, Mr. Minnick, for working so diligently and hard, you know, pretty much, as you say, all year round to make sure we get a balanced budget. Now, from the mayor's office, Alex Alexander was the person that stepped up and made sure that, you know, all this stuff worked and and that that we had a budget that we could be proud of. But it's just simply numbers on a page or in a document. It reflects the values of of our city and our community and the way, and the direction we're going in. And this is a great job, and I got to give credit to your staff as well, Stacy Peterson, you know, who's got your back all the time, making sure that, you know, that we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, and that our debits equal our credits. So I just want to say thank you for all the hard work all of you put in, Alex, Stacy, and team. Let's give you a thousand dollars. We wouldn't be the city we are today without without our finance folks making sure that our numbers are right and that we were on the right track and continually growing here in the city of Aurora. A question from the the council. Alderman, be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation again, Chris. I wanted to know if all the revised proposed budget items are listed in Schedule 1? Are they the only changes, or there are more?
Yeah, those are the only changes that that are being proposed at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. Alderman.
Of course, I have questions. First of all, thank you. I also want to acknowledge the hard work of staff. Everybody answered questions professionally throughout the hearings, and I think it was well organized by the Finance Chair to set up that structure. It's easy to understand and deliver. I did want to ask about the 2024 general obligation bond for $44 million and what the intent is for that.
Yeah, primarily, that's going to go to the expansion of River Edge Park, the fire construction and fire station construction and relocation project. There's also the final installment of the public works facility expenses. We're actually expecting those to be finalized late in 2024 or early in 2025. So we've put funding in there and planned, I think it was a three-year approach for the public works facility. And then I believe we have some roadway and infrastructure improvements that are in there as well.
Three fire stations.
Three fire stations, yes. I should clarify that.
I don't, that's not going to be the total cost for all three, is it? I would assume. Probably spent a lot more than that.
Yeah, that is also going to be a three-phase project. There is, there will be, we have a capital plan, we, well, each, and this is a good good thing to bring out, each year is part of the budget process. We go through and develop a 10-year capital plan, and there are projects, like in this case, where we're designing and constructing and relocating a couple of fire stations, three in total will be constructed, where we phase the improvements over over a couple of years. So there will be additional expenditures in subsequent years for the fire station projects as well.
Okay. And then there was another general obligation bond for $41 million, broken into 8.2 for Parks and Rec and 33.2 for public facilities.
Is that the one that's on page, I don't have a page number, apologies, but in Fund 356, that's actually a subtotal of that 2021 bond? We're only proposing the one bond issue for the 44 million. You're seeing 41 million of it being budgeted during 2024, but that's just a subtotal. It's not an additional bond.
Okay. Understood. And then on the TIF 17, which isn't quite through the process, the Farnsworth Bilter, we have budgeted $7 million, and that's, I believe, we're obligated for a $50 million bond. Why didn't we put the whole amount in?
Yeah, we, we, again, we will be bringing that forward typically when we do bond issues at at various points in time. We do do them as budget amendments, and especially if if things aren't entirely through the process, et cetera. But we will, we will actually be bringing that forward so we can be dealing with, the actual numbers will be bringing that forward as a budget amendment, so that we'll be dealing with the actual numbers as we know them when we, after we price the bond.
Okay. We'll probably be bringing some other construction costs for the fire stations once we have those, or is there anything else we can anticipate in the budget amendment?
Well, typically, we do have various items. I mean, when we go through, as as good as we try to make our our crystal ball, as we develop the budget, there are things that are going to come up that we don't anticipate or that just aren't known today. So we do have a couple of budget amendments that are typically done throughout the fiscal year as part of as part of the process. So we may be bringing forward items. If if we encounter either delays or speed-ups in projects, some of those things may change, and we may have some budget amendments moving forward.
Okay. And then on TIF District 1, the last report I saw within the controllers office was 1.7 million. This document shows 1.8 million. I'm curious, what did we, and then there's zero budgeted, what did we spend the 1.7 or 1.8 million on?
I'd like to take a look at that specifically before I before I answer, just, I want to make sure I give you the right answer.
Okay. Thank you. My other question, too, are probably a little bit more philosophical, but during the economic development presentation on October 17, there was a discussion about the Smart Energy Grant, and then there's some general suggestions that we're hiring a consulting firm or going through some nonprofits to facilitate the state and federal grants. Which nonprofits, and if it's going through a nonprofit, how much transparency will there be?
What are you talking about?
Sorry, the the Smart Energy Grant.
That's a budget that's part of the economic development presentation on October 17. Okay. What does this have to do with what we're talking about, the budget?
I assume we're budgeting for the Smart Energy Grant.
So ask the question. Are we budgeting for the Smart Energy? Just ask the question, so we know what to answer.
I believe that was included in their in their budget. I, yeah, I'm not up on the relevant specifics of that particular plan, but.
Okay. And then on the, this also goes to the discussion about the MOKA budget and the PR. And according to that budget, we're creating a new ACTV, hiring five new staff, full-time staff, and two seasonal workers, which is a significant expansion in the comms department. And I guess this is more of a statement, but I'm concerned that we're effectively building state-run television here.
Hold on. You have a question?
Nope, that'll be it. That was just a statement.
All right, so you got anything else, Mr. Minnick?
No.
All right. All right, so I believe we're going to put this one on unfinished. We're going to be voting on this in a few minutes at City Council. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Do we have anything else?
Got a couple more, but there are, no action required. 23-0966, notification of a public hearing on December 12, 2023 regarding the proposed First Amendment to the existing West Farnsworth, West Farnsworth TIF District Number 7, and no action needed. And then announcing 23-0970, notification of a public hearing on December 12, 2023 regarding the proposed Farnsworth Bilter TIF District, and again, no action required. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Long finance, man. I know you guys are busy, man. And thank you, you know, and I want to thank the the Finance Committee for all the hard work you guys have done. I mean, no matter how many numbers we throw in front of you, the committee to push it forward and get it to this point. So I want to give you guys a round of applause for all your hard work. We got it. A lot of strong members on our Finance Committee that get the job done, and you guys have brought this budget forward, and it looks great. So so appreciate the hard work you put in. And you, as chairman, brother, thank you for all the hard work you do. All right, Chairman Seville, can you give the Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee a quick please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We met November 28, 2023, and we had one item to forward to the Committee of the Whole, and that's 23-0939, resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D downtown core onsite consumption liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from Leilani Aurora Inc., DBA Leilani Asian Fusion at 2 North River Street. This is a new restaurant that's coming into the Hobbs Building. They expect to open up in January to February. It'll be in a couple phases. The first phase will be 125 seats, and then the second phase would be basement and patio seating, 75 seats in the basement and 50 for the patio. We're very excited about having one of the three restaurants that's been promised on the horizon coming to our downtown in the Hobbs Building. And I think the petitioner's here to want to be recognized.
We have the petitioner here. You want to step step up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and talk a little bit about, briefly about the progress you got going on in Leilani?
Good evening, committee as a whole. I'm executive chef Garnett and partner of Leilani. I'm executive chef Garnett and partner of Leilani Asian Fusion. So it's exciting to stand here before you guys tonight as we finalize our application in serving alcohol now establishment, Leilani Asian Fusion. So our mission is to create a safe space for Aurora community where they can be transported in exotic space throughout our ambiance, flavor and music. We hope to be a part of the very fabric of Aurora, embracing the catering and diverse cultural that make up Aurora.
This is a very talented chef who is, who we are watching grow and develop into an entrepreneur and just so proud of him. And we are grateful to be here with you guys tonight to, to share this news, this exciting news about an Asian fusion coming to Aurora and.
We're going to get that fixed. I don't know why my people aren't coming in here to fix it. They got a whole room full of folks.
And we just want to know if you guys had any questions for us or if there's something that we need, we can answer for you.
Anybody have any questions?
Consent.
All right, well, with no questions, no objections, I'm going consent. Thank you very much. We'll be voting on this one on the 12th. Tonight, 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 tonight. So just stick around, stay tuned, one move.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
All right, next.
And Mayor, that's the report from PHSS.
Thank you very much, sir. Chairwoman Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please?
Yes, Mayor. We met on November 27, and the first item is 230907, a resolution authorizing contract with Torture and Associates Inc. to provide construction engineering services for various underground utility improvements projects during the 2024 construction season and the amount not to exceed $250,000.
No objections, I'm going consent.
23-0908, a resolution adopting unit price bids for the purchase of various water and sewer repairs materials for 2024 calendar year.
No objections, I'm going consent.
23-0953, a resolution accepting plumbing services bids for the water and sewer maintenance division.
No objections, I'm going consent.
23-0954, a resolution to accept the proposals received for 2024 water and sewer division emergency repair program.
No objections, I'm going to.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Alderman Bug?
Thank you.
All right, yeah. Go ahead, brother.
On the deciding in the legislation text, it says that local preference did not play a part. One of the vendors had his Aurora address, are they nominating the Aurora or why was not their local preference put before?
Which item was that, Alderman Bug? Walden Sewer, is there anyone here from Public Works?
He's coming in now.
Oh, is he coming in now?
He's coming in now.
The vendor address was undunked, then it said they did not qualify for the local preference.
Mr. Schroth, do you want to step up and address that? Did you hear the question, Mr. Schroth?
Yes, good afternoon, Ken Schroth, Public Works Department. So yeah, I guess that text is wrong because we use MLNL quite frequently when we have to utilize this program. So, you know, because this is a kind of a per-line item basis, what the, what the guys do is they, they look at the most advantageous unit prices for the particular repair that we have to do. So, I mean, if, if there is a local preference opportunity to give, but again, this is like 1:00 in the morning when a water main breaks or a deep sanitary sewer breaks. So we do the best we can and you can see that there aren't too many firms to choose from on this list. There's only three, but when that opportunity exists, we can utilize it that way.
Ms. Coulter, do you have anything else to add? I see you in the room, purchasing.
Yes, Jolene Coulter, Director of Purchasing. This is strictly an emergency basis, so they go through and line by line every project. These are the best ones that can give us the best deal for this day. So, and they see if they can do it. If not, they move on to the next. That's how this whole program works, so.
Alderman Bug, do you have any other?
Yeah, I understand that, but the legislation text is incorrect. We amend that before our next meeting, so they do not qualify for local preference, and they do.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and amend that text.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, and that'll be for this evening, because that'll go on the, all right, with no objection, that'll go on consent with the, with the change in that text. All right.
Next item, Miss, 23-0963, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two replacement movers from Rangers and two source wells for $231,716.42.
No objections, I'm going consent.
And that concludes the meeting, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Chairman Warman, can you give the Rules Administration Procedure Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rules Administration Procedure Committee met on November 21, 2023 and reviewed the following items. 23-0577, an ordinance amending Chapter 13, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to tobacco.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Next item, 23-0925, an ordinance amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, Illinois, commonly known as the Aurora zoning ordinance.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Last item on the agenda, 23-0932, a resolution authorizing the reappointments of Gerald Butters Jr., Jared Ploger and Philip Pogue to the Grand Army of the Republic Memorial Commission.
Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
And that concludes Rules Administration Procedures Committee.
Thank you very much. That concludes our committee report. Let's go on to the held items from previous COW meeting. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item, first item under held items?
23-0910, resolution adopting the 2023 edition of the Fox Walk Overlay District Design Guidelines Intent, Rules and Regulations as an appendix to Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, being the zoning.
Staff.
Just to note, we will be changing this from a resolution to an ordinance. Staff had a misunderstanding through Legistar, so when it goes to, if it's on consent, it will be changed from a resolution to an ordinance.
So we held it last week for what reason?
To, to change as well some updates. And I, again, I, I didn't realize I needed to relaunch the Legistar item.
Is there any questions? Alderman Smith? No questions. All right.
No questions, I've listened to it, it's wonderful. Consent.
No objections, I'm going consent.
Are you clear on the day that it's going?
And just to be clear, the item will move to the City Council meeting on December 19 instead of the City Council meeting on December 12. This will be on the 19th.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go on to new business. Madam Clerk, can you read the first item under new business?
23-0972, a motion authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement between the city and John Palatine in the matter of Palatine v. City of Aurora, case number 22 LA 130 Circuit Court of the 16th Judicial Circuit, King John Allen.
No objections, I'm going consent. That will be going, that's this evening, we're going to take care of that tonight. All right, there is no need for a close session. Special City Council meeting will be held immediately upon the adjournment of this COW meeting. There has been a motion to adjourn by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza, all in favor. Motion carries by voice vote. Let's give ourselves a few minutes and we will get, we'll get things started with the City Council meeting.
I don't think that.
It's called a special meeting of the Aurora City Council for December 5, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderman Yamas? Alderwoman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Masiacos?
Present.
Alderman Donnell?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Tolliver?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderwoman Bade?
Here.
Alderman Lash?
Present.
Alderman Warman?
Here.
Mayor Urban?
Present.
Alderman Bug and Alderman Yamas request permission to participate remotely per Section 2-80 based on a reasonable anticipation of an extended illness. Is there a motion to allow Alderman Bug and Alderman Yamas an opportunity to participate remotely? So the motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that there are some technical difficulties and Alderman Yamas is still trying to get online, but we will wait for his. We'll go ahead and start and he'll join us as we roll. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sergeant of Arms?
Second.
Motion made by Sergeant of Arms, motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Let's go on to mayoral appointments. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under mayoral appointments?
23-0932, a resolution authorizing the reappointments of Gerald Butters Jr., Jared Plojer, and Philip Pogue to the Grand Army of the Republic Memorial Commission.
So moved. Second.
So the motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Lash. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas? Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Do we have anyone from the GAR here with us this evening? We do not. All right, let's go on, but we appreciate and thank those gentlemen for their service to our community. Let's go on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do not.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda, the public hearing. Public hearing pursuant to 65 ILCS 58-2-9.1 through 9.10 for the adoption of the City of Aurora 2024 budget, public hearing for Legisstar file 23-0979. Is there anyone who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Is there anyone that would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Are there any questions or comments from the city council?
Motion, we close public hearing.
Are there being no questions? Has been a motion
Second.
Close public hearing, second by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Madam Clerk, you call the roll.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
All right, let's go on to, public hearing closed. Let's go on to the consent agendas. We will now hear both the consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda in full. Will the clerk now please read both agendas in full?
23-0337, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the state of Illinois, the execution of a Phase 3 construction engineering services agreement with V3 Companies Limited in the not to exceed amount of $102,248 and the appropriation of $275,000 of MFT funds for the Hankis Galena resurfacing project. 23-0577, an ordinance amending Chapter 13, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to tobacco. 23-0783, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the state of Illinois, the execution of a Phase 3 construction engineering services agreement with HR Green Incorporated in the not to exceed amount of $473,545 and the appropriation of $1,600,000 of Rebuild Illinois Bond Funds for the Indian Trail Agulonda Highland Signal Modernization and Resurfacing Project. 23-0838, a resolution authorizing the appropriation and expenditure of MFT funds for snow removal operations in 2024 in an amount up to $1,320,000. 23-0907, a resolution authorizing a contract with Trader and Associates to provide construction engineering services for various underground utility improvement projects during the 2024 construction season in an amount not to exceed $350,000. 23-0908, a resolution adopting unit price bids for the purchase of various water and sewer repair materials for the 2024 calendar year. 23-0925, an ordinance amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, Illinois, commonly known as the Aurora zoning ordinance. 23-0939, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class D Downtown Core On-Site Consumption Liquor Licenses
Man, who's dragging someone?
Unofficially related to the application from Leilani Aurora at 2 North River Street in Ward 2. And was that Alderman Yamas? Yes.
Back on, yes.
All right.
Yeah, I'm back down over here. Thank you.
23-0944, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the state of Illinois, the execution of a Phase 3 construction engineering services agreement with Thomas Engineering Group in the not to exceed amount of $53,808 and the appropriation of $250,000 of MFT funds for the Church and Sheffer Resurfacing Project. 23-0945, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the state of Illinois, the execution of a Phase 3 construction engineering services agreement with Chastain and Associates in the not to exceed amount of $100,179 and the appropriation of $660,000 of MFT funds for the Illinois Avenue Resurfacing Project. 23-0946, a resolution authorizing the city to grant award of $79,550 from the U.S. Department of Justice, COPS Office de-escalation grant program. 23-0953, a resolution accepting plumbing service bids for the water and sewer maintenance division. 23-0954, a resolution to accept the proposals received for the 2024 Water and Sewer Division Emergency Repair Program. 23-0958, a resolution to accept award number 15J COPS 23GG01883TECP from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services Technology and Equipment Program for $2280,000. 23-0963, a resolution authorizing the purchase of two replacement mowers from Reindeers Incorporated through Sourcewell for $231,716.42. 23-0965, a resolution authorizing the execution of a five-year agreement in support of the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau through the hotel operator's occupation tax. 23-0972, a motion authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement between the city and John Palatine in the matter of Palatine v. City of Aurora, case number 22 LA 130, Circuit Court of the 16th Judicial Circuit, King County, Illinois. And 23-0984, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, November 28, 2023, city council meeting.
There's a motion to accept the consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda. Motion been made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Before we entertain those motions, do we have any questions or motions to remove any items from either agenda? Alderman Seville?
I have one question. I should have asked this at the committee as a whole. On item number 23-0783, the rebuild of Indian Trail, there's a huge dip in the railroad tracks. And I know staff has been in contact with the railroad. Does this rebuild a part of that? Because it's very unsafe at this point.
He's coming. He's coming in.
Okay.
No.
I think Ken Schroth is
Ken will answer.
Can you see here? Oh, I thought you left. Sorry. Ken Schroth, Public Works. No, it is not part of this. But staff did meet with the BNSF representative last Thursday with the representative of the mayor's office. We've been after them almost on a weekly basis to get that corrected. So that will be fixed fairly soon by the BNSF.
Before the end of the year, you mean?
That's the hope.
That'd be great. Because I don't know, the plows have to be especially careful going over.
Yeah, it's really rough. And I'm glad that they're not gonna try and wait to throw it in with this project and rather treat it separate.
To be clear, we're at the mercy of BNSF on that particular
Correct.
Right?
It's within their railroad bed.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Seville? All right. Are there any other questions or motions to remove any items? There being none. There been a motion and a second on the floor. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and the direct to council consent agenda are both approved. There is no unfinished business. I'm sorry, there is one item under unfinished business. Madam Clerk, will you read the unfinished business?
23-0979, an ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024 and ending December 31, 2024, in lieu of passage of an appropriation ordinance. So moved.
There's been a motion, a second motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussions on the budget? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries. The 2024 budget is approved. Let's
Mr. Minnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank the mayor, the mayor's office, the city council, the finance department, the budget division staff, and as well as all of the folks from the other departments who contributed to the budget. It truly is a team effort to get that size of a document to you and to get it in a position where we can pass it, you know, approximately a month before the new fiscal year starts. So I'd really like to thank everybody and I appreciate their efforts, everybody pulling in the same direction and meeting the deadline. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna round the applause for Chris Minnick, CFO. All right, what I meant to say is there's no new business coming for the city council. No need for